Well, meeting tonight, I'd like to ask my good friends and friends of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty in us for all.
Thank you for that. Our Father and our God, it's again that we come before you to thank you for allowing us to come together for the business of the city. And we pray, God, as we're in that business meeting, that you give us the heart and mind of God, and we'll be able to take care of your business. We thank you now for this opportunity. We pray that you bless our city, our state, and our country. We thank you for this. In Jesus' name we pray. We all say amen.
Amen.
I'm going to call this meeting in 4:30 in the city station. The order. First thing we have on the consent agendas, we have a regular meeting on 8/21. We have a workshop that was done on 8/21, and then we have another workshop that was done on 8/28. Everybody had a chance to look those over. I need a motion to approve. Have a motion from Commissioner Ashbrook. We have a second?
Yes.
Second, Commissioner Langston. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. David, do you want to, I don't think Bill's here, you want to give me an update on the...
Sure. On the update we have for the PSGRA, this Sunday, the striping will begin on Reed Avenue. Weather pending, of course. And I don't know if... John, do you have an update on when they'll continue the striping throughout town?
Well, we received an email this afternoon from Mr. Smallwood, and my understanding is all of that should be occurring at the same time. Avenue wave, downtown, Long Avenue. So, weather pending.
Okay. So, Reed Avenue on Sunday.
That's it.
It's all concurrent. Yes, ma'am.
All right. City Attorney.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. I have no updated comment at this time.
Okay. Vice President, GM, both businesses.
Yes, sir. First item is the road buying money. We've been trying to decide how we can disburse the last approximately $97,000. One of the items that was asked for us to price out was Williams Avenue, Commissioner Langston. I said I did have a conversation with Mr. Smallwood. He felt that you could do that for approximately $85,000 as one of the items that you wanted to do if you wanted to. We've also looked at several different things as far as the patches on Palm and 20th Street. There's a couple on 7th Street we've looked at. Some other things that's been mentioned was Maddox Parking Lot in front of Maddox House, in front of, what else could we look at? Let's see. But staff's hoping it doesn't matter to us really, as long as it's a road that's going to be beneficial to us, and we don't have a bunch of utilities under us, is what's really interested us on which ones we could choose.
One thing I haven't mentioned, but I thought it was going to, because I thought it might have been taken care of, was Reed Avenue and First Street, where it's, I mean, it's almost, you come off First, or come off Reed, and it's just, I mean, it's real bumpy right there. I don't know if that, that might be something they can fix or not. Within the budget, maybe do Williams too. I mean, they'll be right there. See if they can...
Clay thought that it was somewhere in the neighborhood, probably around $85,000 was his estimate was to do Williams Avenue. He suggested that if you tackle Williams Avenue, hold off on doing Maddox Parking Lot until you see what's been done over Main Street to see if there's money left over, because that's a big project over on Main Street.
We've got $97,000?
Probably, yes. But he felt that would be enough to do Williams.
Would you give a decision on that, Jim?
They are continuing to do work around town, I would think, sooner than later. I don't know that Clay has to have a decision tonight to give to the contractor, but I would, I would think that we'd want to make a decision in the next few weeks, because they're going to continue doing work, you know, they're coming back to work on the striping, they've got to go back and work on 8th Street, which is going to take some time to get that done, but I would think you'd want to make a decision in the next few weeks. If you think of any other streets you would like to force the price out and consider, let us know. Okay. The next item we have is the community garden. Commissioner Langston's been working on that for...
I've been, I've had a few people come, give me a report on some things, and we're really looking into some type of insurance that we have to have. So, I need a little extra time to try to see what type of insurance and what's available, and how, how we can pay for the insurance, and who has to pay for the insurance before we move on with that, so I'd like to take a look.
Will the city sponsor the insurance, or how would that work?
Jim, the last time we had, they did the community garden, did, do you know if the city sponsored it, I mean, paid for the insurance or not?
Not that I'm aware of. We can look to see. To understand the property was actually owned during the time, was owned by the St. Joe Company, and Mr. Roy Lee did much of the work then. You know, back 20, 30 years ago, insurance was being, is an object, it is paid because you're more concerned about litigation, so I would be shocked if they was any kind of insurance on it.
Okay. I asked the guy, I can't think of his name, but I called him, the guy, the St. Joe Company, and he said that they did have insurance, but, so I called the guy at the county, he said they didn't have it through them. So, I've been trying to do some research and find out.
So, there was, there was insurance on it?
There was insurance on it.
If we can figure out who the agent is, or all the grants, if I can find anything and see...
Okay. I appreciate it. And I just, I'll do some extra research and try to find out. I'm really ready to get this thing going, so I just, I'll come to your office and we'll talk about it.
All right. On the new business, the first time we have is the boat ramp fees. Commissioner Ashbrook, want to talk to you tonight about it?
Sure. And I brought up at the last meeting about a credit card swiping machine that also accepts cash down for at the boat ramp. I've still got two emails out that have not been responded to yet, so I'm still doing the research on that. It's really not as big an issue off-season now, but I'd love to get something in there before March, before it really picks up again. So, I will keep researching.
One thing we need to try to decide on too is an enforcement mechanism, kind of like we're doing with the golf carts, working it offline too. We're going to need some kind of mechanism, some kind of fee structure and a process to collect fees.
And the machines that I'm looking at, it actually just gets out a ticket, you put it in the window. You can give locals a code that they can punch in, and it spits out a free ticket, and everyone else would have to pay to receive their ticket to launch.
But the last three weeks, we've had 110 paid launches, 110, and 140 paid launches over the last three weeks.
I saw more boats than that at Capital City Bank this weekend.
Some of those are residents.
The next item we have is the Port St. Joe High School State Championship signs. Mr. Grantland has been working, trying to get us a, to chair us a sign, so he has one for you tonight to look at.
John, I appreciate, I know I asked you to work on this a little while back. The only bit of flack I'm probably going to catch is the year, the years, and you know...
That's right. I understand. This was a starting point for...
I would say if we can put the years on it, the different years, I think, if we can fit them on there, that'd be jam-o.
Okay. We'll work on that, and I'll try to get something back to you guys, and when you look at it, we'll go from there.
Yeah, I mean, that's what I've been asking for too, John, and I don't see anything wrong with this other than that.
What about state runner-up? You just going to put the champions on there, or runner-up? The last time you had, they had runner-up, and state champion on there. Think we had a little bit?
I don't remember, I don't recall runner-ups. I recall the, you know, the state championship with the years, but perhaps it were. You know, we can do anything the board wants to do. This was just a, you know, the step in that first direction.
I think just state champion would be fine. I thought, you know, I think state champion would be fine. They deserve it.
So, we can, you know, like I said, we'll, we'll sit down and try to redesign something with the specific years and get it back in front of the board.
What about the state championship that Washington High won during the time that they had school over there? We got to put something on there for them, some type of way. I don't know how many, but we need to go back, need to go back and see how many, how many they won of, but I think it'd be nice to put that on there also. That's just, just a suggestion for me. I think it'd be a good thing, I think it'd be a cool thing to do, because we have a lot of people that didn't attend Port St. Joe High School, they only attended Washington High, and to leave them out of the entire thing, I think it wouldn't, it wouldn't be right. I think we need to add some of the championships that Washington High had on there. It'd be a good thing, I think.
I'd say while we're doing it, let's try to make sure we don't leave, leave anybody out for the state championship.
Would some of the information be available in the museum?
Or the Star Archives or something?
Should we go, Mr. Monette?
Yeah, Mr. Monette will probably help you.
I can get with, with somebody, Mr. Monette or whoever, and I'll get with you, John.
The next item we have is a reference to taxi services. Mayor Patterson, want to talk to you tonight about it?
Yes, I've just heard a couple people calling me, and you know, since Mr. Dixon passed away, we don't have much of a taxi service here, and I guess he might have worked with Redline a little bit maybe, because the lady said that another person with Redline, he came over, and Jim, did you ever get a chance to talk with him?
I could not find who to contact there on the Redline. If we got a contact person...
I'll see if I can find one. We definitely need a good taxi service here in town. Anybody knows anybody who wants to start a taxi business, I don't know what all it takes to do it, but we need one. So, I'll check and see if I can find out who the Redline is, the person to talk to, because I told them and talked to the lady, told me that they were trying to find somebody else to work this area, but they hadn't found anybody at that time. But I'll get back with you on it.
Look, if somebody decides to do this taxi thing, do they work under Redline with their licenses?
I think you can. I think Mr. Dixon was, he had his own when he was working through them on some things too. Got to help him with other business, you know, when he didn't have anything they had that he could do. I mean, he was doing a lot, he had airports, you know, for different people.
Okay. I'll check too.
Yeah. Other things, you know, our citizens, they need, people don't have a way to ride, depending on a cab. There's a lot of them in town too, depending on cab service. Mr. Dixon used to ride a lot of them around.
Yes, he did.
He did. So, I just think we needed to do all we can to try to find out and get a taxi service in Port St. Joe, so I'll research a little more too and see what I can look with.
The last item I had, Mayor, is the Gulfport St. Joe PAC zoning request. We have the workshop we're moving forward with on 9/27 and 5 o'clock at the Washington Improvement Center. We actually have Ray Greer be here tomorrow to actually work on the zoning.
What about the letters that's supposed to go up?
I have not seen it yet. That was one thing I had a question for, for Mr. Greer, was we need the letter, and we need the mail out of the people to send it out to. We'll be happy to send it out at City Hall. We don't have, we got the mail-in machine and everything, but we do need the letter, and we need the mail out, yes.
That's the letter to the property owners?
Yes. Yeah. So, as soon as we got that, then we'll, we'll be happy to mail them out.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
That's it?
Yes, sir.
All right. Public Works.
Mayor, I do not have anything. I'd like, let's the board ask questions for me.
I got another question. Did you ever do, check on stop signs on 8th, for 8th?
Yes, and Chief and I went out and looked at those, and I believe, did Chief speak with you about that?
Yeah, basically, that's my job.
Okay.
I'll talk to you, we'll talk.
We can, yes, be glad to.
John, all this water, we got, I imagine we got some flooding going on, don't we?
Little bit, sir.
It's pretty saturated, really, although it's hit you wet. All right. Anybody else have anything for John? Surface water, Larry?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, just one thing, I wanted to bring to your attention. We're still having a few issues with the logging companies up on the canal. Last week, we had an incident where they ripped some of our gates out, and I contacted the St. Joe Company, the employees, and he said they're going to have them repaired, but, you know, it's getting to be more and more of incidents, things going on up there, so I just want you to be aware of it.
I think we need to figure out who's doing it. I mean, is it them, some of their guys that do it?
It's, it's, the people that are contracting out to do the logging, so... But they say that they do it on their land too, they do the same thing. They rip their gates out, so it makes a lot of sense.
They probably need something formal sent.
Maybe put something there that can't be moved easily.
I guess we're going to have to.
You know, some of the things, them prongs sticking out, like sending these hunting leases and all, might need something like that.
Yeah, a roller scooter is really kind of hard. Do we need to send something formal, you think?
Well, that's what we're bringing to your attention, in case Adam has to, you know, write a letter or something.
Y'all feel like we do. I find...
I think they've been pulling this stuff for a while, it's time.
Did we just talk to them?
Well, I think this is another group.
I think that's, that's the issue. You've got several different groups. The St. Joe Company has sold off a lot of their property, so you have one problem in one area, and you have another problem in another area, because you've got several different property owners that are contracted and allowed. Yes, we're happy to get out a letter and see if we can get it done.
All right. What finance director?
Mayor, we've got a budget workshop scheduled for Thursday for the first public hearing of the presentation of our budget for 501 on Thursday.
All right. Good deal.
That's all I have.
All right. Waste Ward? GM, you have it?
He's actually running the plan today. We've had so much rain, so much coming to the lagoon the last couple of days, Kevin's actually working it out.
All right. City engineer?
He's actually not here this evening, he's home here.
Please not here tonight. All right. Code enforcement? We've both got their copies to look at. Did you service? Police department?
No, so we don't have anything, Mr. Johnson?
Nothing for the police department?
No.
The city clerk?
Sir, I have a couple things. Thursday of this week, the Florida Historical Review Commission will be reviewing grants in Tallahassee once again. The Centennial Building is in this round, as you know. Last year, we came in, we ranked number A, felt real good about it. When the legislature finished and the funding, they funded five complete grants and won a portion of grant number six. So, maybe we can move up a little farther and get funding this year. Also, Bruce Ballister, our ARPC grant manager, will be having a group will bypass in the morning, totally unexpected. Said he would appreciate it, you know, certainly people would remember him, and surgical too. We are having open enrollment on Wednesday, September the 19th, and also on Thursday, September the 20th. I'll get the list to you and work with you all on the time that is convenient. And if I could dive into what you were talking about a few minutes ago concerning the state championships, I hope you gentlemen would consider adding a state championship that Port St. Joe High School had in the 40s before the Florida Athletic Association was actually formed. It is documented, it is in the papers. Frank Cannon was the coach, that's Andy Smith's grandfather, for those of you who may not know him. Some of the men that played on that team went on to become prisoners of war and came home. But I do hope that that year would be included.
Someone mentioned that to me the other day.
Yes, sir.
It's not too long recognized.
No.
I'm guessing.
Some former superintendent chose not to include them because said it wasn't, during the time of the Florida High School Activities Association, I think that's irrelevant when it's in the paper and documented.
Was it baseball?
No, sir, it was football.
Football.
Yes, sir. But if y'all would just please consider that group as well, they, I mean, many of the years have gone over. That's all I have.
We'll have them on the sign.
I do that. We don't want to leave, like I said, we don't want to leave anybody out, nobody. All right, we're now going to go to our citizen to be heard. We will be using our three-minute rule again, just to explain that you have an initial three minutes to speak. If any commissioner wishes to give you an additional three minutes with a second, you'll be able to speak an additional three minutes. Each and every one of you that wants to speak, of course, will be able to speak. I would maybe ask you if you got a group here on the same subject, if you might would consider nominating someone to speak for all of you. You don't have to do that, of course. Like I say, everybody will be getting to speak that wants to. So, with that, see if show of hands who might want to speak from the audience. Come on up.
And to make things simpler, if you don't mind, Mr. Mayor, I'll make the motion now to cover anyone that's speaking and runs out of time, so the motion's been made, and then now we'll just need a second.
Okay.
First one. Good evening. I want you all back here. This is not, because I've been putting together all these officials to take you today, and it might take a little long, free message, but, but y'all are all ready, I do the best I can. We appreciate the time. Robert Branch, 1068 Marvin Avenue. These documents were prepared for me this June, represent the settlement of my house created due to the conditions and location. My house, along with others in the neighborhood, have this type of settlement. The attached documents are for residents along the same floodplain, wetlands, who have had the same problem and concerns. As we have stated before, there is a minimum of 12 foot of muck running throughout this floodplain. We are still highly concerned of our present flooding problems and the more devastating problems that would occur due to your plans of piping at least 300 foot of drainage to begin with. Stormwater canal, drainage stormwater canal. Then, along with building up so much more area from the ball field, would push the water level up under our houses even more on both Marvin and Woodbury. The devaluation of our homes, the lights, the noise, the congestion would be very devastating to our neighborhood. Commissioner Scott Hopman has worked very hard with the residents and continued his efforts for all of our present problems and future concerns. All the other city and county commissions have not, have not listened or cared about any of our problems or future problems that would be created. We will hold all the other city and county commissioners to the utmost accountability for their lack of concern due to this park expansion. We are asking you now to rescind your vote due to all our concerns. Now, we'll, we'll talk about the package. This is actually my, the house that I had in June, quoted as made, this is only two-thirds of its page, and all the others, when we turn the pages, when we get to the list of the residents, it starts from 8th to 20th Street, pretty much on both sides of the floodplain. Some of them were signed, my name's Florida. Three minutes is up. We have a second for additional three minutes. We have a second for additional three minutes. Mr. Branch, your time is up, so make your... Great.
First thing on the flooding problems that we have, and number two is, this is a 275-acre water basin. I mean, that's just, this is ridiculous to try to take and put something of this nature into something of this nature. Number two is that you have the 68 percent filled with drains. I'd like for you to go over and walk it tomorrow and just see how much water you see standing on it. Do yourself a favor, go over and look at it. Hey, you don't need, not to wear boots, man. Be honest. And something I want to tell you too is that you talk about the children. For 18 percent of the ball players, you want to do this right? 18 percent of them. Let's say 20, and that way we get the pickleball in on them too. What are you going to do for the other 80 percent of the children? Think about it. 80 percent of them, their parents and grandparents are concerned too. So, keep that in mind. And right there with Robert, then, with these people that are coming in and signing this, did he give y'all a copy of it?
Yes, sir.
The flooding, $30,000 that they spent on foundation problems due to the marsh that's going down. What are you going to do about it? You can't. So, all you can do is try to fix the problem that you have now. If you start looking at these people's comments and everything, they're all basically the same, but all you want to do is add to it. So, gaze at them and see what you think about it, and see if it was at your house, where you would be standing at. And some of you have lived there, and you know what it consists of. We rode through there today looking, it's a shame that the way that you do the park, and you put the trail through there, and you build it up, and the peoples up under their houses are flooded, and they out there in the rain trying to dig the niches out to where they can get the water out from up under the house. Ease over and look at them, at the girls' softball fields. Do yourself a favor, and be more concerned about it instead of just sitting there and gazing in the sky. They were people out there, the daddy homeowners, in the rain, digging out to try to get the water. I'm talking about the water is all the way up under the house, and we didn't have a whole lot of rain. What if it was your house? What would you do? And you think about the 80...
Time is up. Do we have a second? My time.
You think about the 80 percent.
Sir, your time is up.
Okay. Don't forget that 80 percent...
Yes, sir.
...of those children have parents, grandparents that hold it.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, but we had a gentleman that was going to speak, and he rescinded his time, which gives the speaker...
Sure, that's fine. Sure, I didn't hear him say that. That's fine, yeah. He had, he wanted to use his time, yes, sir.
But you can do something about this. I mean, when you said, what are your plans with the filled drain? You just don't walk away from something 60 acres that's given to you, because it's safe for the children. Safe for the children. Those children can practice ball right here, this can be for tournament fields. How many of them run a device to practice? None of them. How much have you done, all of you, for the safety of the children crossing 71 to get over to the park? What have you done? Nothing. That's why we can't answer. Nothing. It's a disgrace that you will take and do something like this to the citizens of Port St. Joe. And we're not through yet. Keep that in mind.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Knight, Roar?
Yes. Well, we're talking about heights. I want to, Mr. Ashbrook has a copy of this, and I'm surprised he hasn't talked about this in the past. We gave him this copy a while back. We're, we're really concerned about what the potential is. My little home has never had any sort of flooding issues, but I look at my neighbors, and it's the real deal, boys and girls. And this is a document that is from Dewberry. And this is a, a document that is from Dewberry, which isn't a local, uh, engineering firm. They're out of Fairfax, Virginia. And all the checks that are sent out of the city and the county go to Philadelphia. So make no mistake, we're not dealing with a local engineering firm. Dewberry is pleased to provide the proposal of professional services. It is our understanding the county wishes to pipe portions of the ditch between Eighth Street and Twenty-Sixth Street in Port St. Joe in order to redevelop for, for a sports complex. In order to determine the piping, this ditch, this appropriate number of pipes, Dewberry will gather field information needed and conduct the calculations. So this contract from the county with, with Dewberry is concerning our city and our piping and our flooding. What in the world is the county doing involving themselves in this? Step up, gentlemen. Not to mention, these, this has been paid. There's two invoices that the county paid. I'd like to see that piping plan. Brett, you work for the county. You got a piping plan for us? Didn't think so. So, and then it goes further between Mr. Smallwood and Mr. Yeager. Mr. Yeager, a county employee and our engineer. Who's running the ship here, boys? Sure doesn't seem to be y'all. It's an embarrassment. But the other thing, Mr. Lowry, I know you know how to fill in a swamp land. Congratulations on thirty-eight.
Yes, sir. You're back. Come on up.
Two meetings ago.
Please state your name.
Please, sir.
Yes, sir. Sign in for me. I know you're Mr. Rogers, yes, sir, but the record has to have it.
Okay. Two weeks, uh, two meetings ago, I mentioned the fact that the, uh, drainage system had trash in it. The water could not flow out. Now, due to the rain we've been having and the fact that the baseball field behind my house is elevated, the water cannot drain out through the natural floodplain anymore because the baseball field blocks it. It forms a dam. And the, uh, drainage, the pipe over there that I asked if y'all could get it cleaned out approximately six to eight weeks ago has still not been cleaned out. So needless to say, the rain we are having now is pushing the water up to my house. You know, if, if they would have put a... Baseball field would have had the drainage system put in when it was put in, and the pipes that are there now were not plugged up, a lot of that flooding issues might be solved. But y'all don't seem to want to solve the problems. Y'all just want to create more. The man sitting right next to you, Mr. Lowry there, he lives next door to me. He knows what's about to flood in there. And he's sitting there just, uh, looking through his paper, in, whatever. He knows what's going on, but he's ignoring us, and I say it. And he lived there, so that's telling me that he don't care nothing about the citizens that live down through their own market. But he moved out. Maybe some of the citizens there can't afford to move out. And as we, the more flooding we get, the less value we have in those homes. And we're paying premium taxes on some of those houses there because the city has a value at a high... Well, not really the city. I guess the tax assessor, which worked for the city, has a value at high prices. Let him come out there and revalue them when water's flooding all through the yards. And you can't... I mean, you're... I guess my three minutes are up.
Do we have a motion for a second? For an additional three minutes? Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Mr. Rogers, I've got boots to lay off, Steve. They brought on...
John, would, would you check those drains that he's talking about tomorrow to make sure we get them cleaned out for him?
Yes, sir, I will.
Okay. I appreciate it. Thank you.
I'm Claire Morris, thirteen oh four Marvin Avenue. The citizens of this city and the county expect you to honor your commitment that you made back in two thousand and five and two thousand and thirteen, it was updated, to build a sports complex on the land that the St. Joe Company gave to the citizens of this city and to this county, sixty acres for the sole purpose of constructing, operating, and maintaining a sports complex. I want to know, are you telling us that you are breaching this interlocal agreement? Or has the county breached it? Because you... There were stipulations and things that the city had to do and the county had to do, and then they would, you would join in on this. When it was updated in two thousand and thirteen, it was because the city had met a lot of these obligations. So now the city meets the obligations, and now you're not building this complex where you promised and on the land that belongs to the citizens. Thirteen years, this dream has been held in front of the people. Everybody, when this first started, we talked to people. Yes, they're building it on the Field of Dreams. Everything's on the Field of Dreams. The citizens, if you're not going to build on this Field of Dreams, that sixty acres is sitting there. What are you going to do with it? What are your plans for that sixty acres that was on the deed solely for a sports complex? The citizens, if you're not going to build it and you're going to abandon this, if you're going to abandon it, the citizens need a say in this. You told them and you have promised for thirteen years that you're going to build a Field of Dreams out there. Then you need to let it be known that you're backing out of it, that you're not doing it and you're not going to fulfill the commitment, and tell us too, what are you going to do with that land? What's going on with the land if you're not building it there? Because it's a citizen's land. It's not yours. It is the citizens', and we have a right to know what you're doing.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else?
Could I say, could I say one thing? She asked questions. Can y'all get ready to answer? Uh, it's more for three minutes.
Is anyone in the audience wish to speak tonight? If I say a hand, come on up.
How you doing?
Just fine. How you doing, sir?
Jim Sicles. Uh, I've sat in numerous meetings here on this ballpark, whether to put it in town, out of town, where it should go, can we fund it, can we not fund it? Apparently, there is money out there to initiate it. And then they, we have to look into funding to continue with it. Is it possible to have a vote of the community as a whole as to where they want this ballpark? I mean, I've sat here time and time again and heard the same story over and over and over and over again. Why don't we allow the public to vote on it? And majority rules? One or the other. And now we're done with location. We still have funding problems, and we still have a drainage problem. I believe the drainage problem should come first anyway, no matter where the game goes. But it'll clear this issue up and save everybody a lot of time and a lot of headache. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. In the back?
My name's Elaine Rogers, eight ten Marvin Avenue. My question is, if y'all decide to put the ball field and keep it where it is right now, will we get a guarantee as residents? That if you put that ball field there and our homes flood, who's going to be responsible when our homes start falling apart, which they already are, but due to the flooding because it's not... That flooding area is not being maintained, those ditches and all. Y'all come in and y'all build that, and our homes start falling apart. We don't want to claim on our insurance. It's not fair to us. Who's going to be responsible for our homes? The city? The county? Who? Are we going to get a written statement from you guys? Because y'all are responsible if y'all want this here. Y'all voted for it. Are y'all going to be responsible for our homes, for the repair of them? Are y'all going to pay for our homes? Are y'all going to buy our homes? Who's going to be responsible? Who's going to answer? Anybody? You? You? You, Mr. Mayor? You, you lived there. You ran away from it.
I didn't run away from it.
You most certainly did.
I did nothing.
You can't even speak up because you're too, you're too sorry to speak up. You lived there.
Now, we're local Badger people.
Don't start that Badger with me. You did it. You did it to an innocent man. So don't talk to me about Badger. I can play just as dirty, if not worse.
I go around your insurance policy.
See? I can be nice and I can be mean, just like you. Now, my three minutes are up.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? Anyone else wish to speak in the audience tonight? Anyone else? All right, Mr. Smallwood, I'll start with you. You have anything?
Well, I just want to go back to what I think would be old business. Um, Mr. Fields had asked us at our last meeting to check on a water bill for, uh, wig. Right, right. Well, we, uh, looked into it. Jim found out that the water bill has been about three, four hundred dollars, but three hundred of that has actually been for garbage pickup. So Jim had reached out to, uh, Waste Pro to find out if they were willing to waive that fee. And I don't know if we ever heard anything back. Okay, so, uh, I just wanted to give an update. Uh, the update is hopefully we will get Waste Pro to waive that fee. And that should save, uh, not only your group, but the other groups that share those buildings. And then we did put in the budget this year, uh, how much? Twenty-five hundred dollars. An additional twenty-five hundred dollars to give to the group that's already helping some of the seniors pay the water bills. And I'll get with Joanna White to let her know that we would, uh, expect that money to be earmarked for water bills. So that's the update. That's all I have.
All right. Mr. Smallwood?
I don't have anything.
So, Mr. Ashbrook?
Good, Mayor.
Mr. Langston?
Um, I talked to, um, Mr. Davis about that, um, the water, the water bill thing and the issue. And, um, he was saying that the dumpster is, um, split between, um, the wig and, um, and Gulf Coast, and Gulf, Gulf, um, workforce. And, um, wig's not really using that, um, that dumpster. Most of it's coming from workforce. And, uh, only time that they really use is when they rent it out or whatever. So I think that we need to get with Mr. Joanna, our workforce, and let them know that, look, um, and I don't think they, they can depend majority of the use. So I think we need to get with workforce and find out, um, what we can get from them, because they're putting everything on the wig.
Well, and that's why I said, instead of creating a, a division and trying to figure out who uses what, um, those buildings and that property is within the city property. And Waste Pro is already gracious enough to comp several of the city cans. So my, my thinking is, instead of getting everybody, instead of creating a problem with who should pay how much, I'm hoping that Waste Pro will step up and cover and comp the cans. And then we don't have a problem.
Okay, well, I, I don't think they're going... I don't think Waste Pro's going to do it, um...
Well, I got full confidence in them, unless, unless they say not. I was hoping they're, they're going to, they're going to solve this problem.
I hope they, I hope they, they'll be willing to, but, um, we'll, we'll leave that up to Mr. Davis.
Yeah, we have, uh, we put a can out there on the outside of the gym that's free for the city. But what happened when the request came from Joanna White to get another can, we gave her an eight-yard dumpster, which should have been a four, to help accommodate that. So we only charged it for the four. So we gave it extra in order for that happen, but that... The wig only had a ninety-six gallon can at first. So the dumpster went to the workforce.
Yes, can you come up?
I'm sorry.
I'll give you a report there. No, you're speaking to the man.
Uh, the, the original dumpster that was set there for the workforce was a four-yard. I put exercise there just to help them out. Uh, they were only charged for a four-yard. Am I right, Ken?
Yes, sir.
And, and so the wig actually only had a ninety-six gallon total. And that's all they had. So when we put the dumpster there, that we removed the ninety-six, but the bill should have been divided at that time for the workforce. We can only give so much.
Yeah. So you gave, you gave half, and we're asking for that other half?
We can't, we can't, not, not on that. Because on the back side, we also got a, a four-yard back there that's free to the city.
Is it, is it being used, like filled up each week or whatever?
The workforce is also using that. So, so during that day of giving out commodities or whatever they're giving out at that time, they're filling up bins up. Uh, we might also get some help by reducing if we can change that off, because we've got a lot of people just coming out the dumpster. We've observed that, so, uh, it, it has to be governed or policed by someone in order to keep it from being filled. Then maybe you can drop down one of the pickups, because we're picking up three times a week.
You talking about that dumpster up behind the rip?
No, they took that one off. They took that one off. But the one that's, uh, uh, the eight yard is sitting behind the, uh, right, behind the workforce.
Well, may, maybe we can find a dumpster somewhere in the city that we're getting comped and not really filling it up all the way, and we'll get that other half of that dumpster that we're not utilizing and move it over to the wig and, uh, the other groups.
We got a lot of the company, and we can't put it on any particular people because a lot of people just come by and they sit around their dumpster. And they, they utilizing them. There's a lot of people that's outside of our city limits that don't pay for garbage because they're not mandatory. So they'll come in, they'll find a way to find dumpsters, and that's our problem. But, uh, we will get with, uh, Lloyd and, uh, Ralph and ask them, uh, will they reduce that?
Yeah, if, because those folks are meeting a need for people that need their services. So if anyone needs a comped garbage can, it's that area, okay?
I would agree to that.
And I don't want to create a, an issue where we have the different groups worrying about splitting a bill for... about we splitting a bill for how many pieces of garbage did you put in there versus the other group.
I understand.
So my request is to Waste Pro to dig a little deeper and see if we can't get something working out for this.
We'll make that a request, huh? I don't know if I can, but we'll make that.
Thank you.
Also, I like to say, um, the garbage, those, um, cans on, Ten Street, Mr. Bob? Mr. Bob? What, what, where's those, um, say on Ten Street, where those dumpsters are? Come up for a minute. Those, um, dumpsters on, is it on Ten Street?
On there, um, Eighth Street, by the stackhouse.
By the stackhouse, um. It's, it's, it's getting ridiculous how people just come in and I guess they're dumping their household garbage in those, um, those dumpsters, just trash all over the place. They can come and dump it one day and it's the same way the, the next.
What's the next thing?
What are they there for?
For car, 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 car.
Yeah, but they're putting, they're putting trash and everything else in and it's ending up on the ground. It, it makes it look, look terrible.
When it gets full, they pile it down. It's where it gets, the wind, right? It blows different.
I, I...
A lot of them move first thing.
That's, that's what I was thinking. They don't have to remove them, you know? It's all right.
If you get more dumpsters, you can prop your money, but you without a place for them to put your cargo. And maybe every once in a while, if you catch somebody dumping something out there, you get to take it.
Mr. Bob, would you just state your name for the record?
Sure. Bob Culver.
And your address?
I'm at Marvin Avenue.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Bob.
I ain't got to the ballpark yet, we'll get that later.
All right. That's all we got? I don't have anything, can I go? Need a motion to adjourn. All right, we adjourn.